And good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting and Work Session for June 23rd, 2020. I am the Chair of the Board, John Hutchings. And we also have Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah and Ramiro Chavez, our County Manager. We have our Public Health and Social Services Director Shelley Slaughter, Shelley Slaughter, and our County Health Officer, Dr. Diana Yu. And we have others that I can't see. Well, I see Diana Benson and Tim, I see. But is there, do you want to introduce other people I can't see? Or maybe on the phone?
Yes, sir. I have Pam Harmon-Beyer. She is the Superior Court Administrator. And I have Karen Wheeze from Public Works, as well as, did you introduce Tim? You did, right?
Okay.
So that's what I got.
All right. We have an action-packed agenda, and we will be concluding this piece by 11:30 because we're going to be going into an executive work session.
Of the Board of Health?
What's that? For the Board of Health?
Board of Health Executive Session.
Right. So we're going to start with the COVID-19 update, and I'll turn it to Shelley. Thank you, Shelley.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So for this weekly report, I'll share the latest data, and then I will pass it to Dr. Diana Yu for further information. In Washington State, as of yesterday, there have been 28,870 cases of COVID-19, 1,276 deaths. In Thurston County, as of this morning, we stand at 220 confirmed cases of COVID-19, four deaths. Three of those deaths have been attributed to the recent long-term care facility outbreak, which Dr. Yu will provide an update on. Thirty-two have been hospitalized during the course of their illness. One hundred and ninety-one are no longer under public health isolation and quarantine. We've had two congregate care setting outbreaks, and we have current adequate PPE in our healthcare system and adequate capacity in our healthcare system. And that concludes my update, and I'll pass it to Dr. Yu to provide some more details.
Good morning. If you, for the listening audience and for the Commissioners, you may notice that the, the information that we're putting out on our dashboard regarding deaths due to COVID or related to COVID has changed. And we have been aware of that and have tried to keep up with the deaths that are due to COVID or deaths that are not due to COVID but occur around the time that they're diagnosed. So we worked with the Department of Health to reconcile that. So our deaths that are currently, that have been determined to be due to COVID is four. Three of our most recent deaths have been in patients that died of other causes that happened to have COVID at the time of their death. And all that is unfortunate and is very sad. And, but in trying to be mindful of keeping the information accurate, we wanted to make that correction. Regarding the long-term care outbreak, the one smaller outbreak is considered finished. They've had no additional cases since the very beginning. The other outbreak, which involves a larger facility, we're on monitoring right now. There are no more plans to go in to do any more testing. In order to consider an outbreak over, we need to wait about two incubation period cycles of not having new cases. So the residents and staff are being monitored daily, and we're keeping tracks of that. And so if anybody starts to have symptoms, we know they will get tested again, and then we will follow accordingly. So so far, fingers crossed, none since June 8th. So the monitoring will continue until the first part of July, and then we'll consider that over. There was a directive from the Secretary of Health for all long-term care facilities and memory care units that have Alzheimer, I'm sorry, assisted living facilities with memory care units attached to have all of their staff and residents receive a baseline COVID testing. So that is in the process right now, and they are being done independently. And the only time we get involved is if there is a positive result. And that is, that's reported to us just like any other positive result. So we did get one, no, two from two different facilities. That's not constitute an outbreak when one person is tested, especially if that one person is asymptomatic. So what, what they are doing is looking at who that staff person worked with to see if there's any other illness associated and perhaps more testing to be done. So we are, we are monitoring. I do not believe these are outbreaks. I believe these are individual cases in terms of doing the survey, the baseline survey as they're doing right now. All of these folks have a screening done. If they're all asymptomatic at the time of testing, so it's, it's good. So we will be monitoring. Anybody who tests positive is going to be monitored for signs and symptoms daily. So so far, we have not gotten any symptoms. So we will continue to, they're, they're, they're not working. They're isolated, and they're, they're continuing to be monitored. I'm trying to think. Did I miss anything, Shelley?
No, Dr. Yu, you covered it.
Yeah, thanks. Is there any questions? Are there any questions?
Questions of the doctor or Shelley? Go ahead, Commissioner.
How many are currently hospitalized?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that was what I forgot. There are four people who remain hospitalized due to COVID. Three of them are from the long-term care facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Shelley or Dr. Yu? No. Thank you both very, very much. Thank you. Is Kurt Harden on the line?
No, but I just want to make you, he's out ill today. But just for the view in public, just to make your word, we're currently have, we're distributing 128,000 cloth masks for low income, income, income individuals here in Thurston County. And the way we're going to be distributing that is going to be via the Thurston County Food Bank, Partners in Provision and Education, Salsan Senior Services, Central Integral, Educativo Latino of Olympia, Committee Action Council, Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, Rochester Organization for Families, also known as RUF, Salvation Army, Salsan YMCA. And that's it. So I'd like to, the view in public, if they're in need of securing any cloth masks for free. And for those individuals who cannot afford to purchase one, they can access those locations, as we will have plenty of cloth masking.
Well, that's great to hear because that's a really broad, broad base covering the county. So that's very good to hear.
And also, if I may, I can, I know there is a lot of interest on the community as to where we are on the application for Thurston County moving into Phase Three of the Governor's Force, Fourth, Four-Phase Approach of Opening the Economy. As you know, Thurston County was eligible to submit an application last Wednesday. That was June 17th. We submitted an application to the State Department of Health on June 17th, just about before four o'clock. Since the State Department of Health has been under review in our application, there has been some questions, as well as there have been some matters that needed to be addressed. I believe we have worked through those issues. We finally, we got a final letter from one of the partners yesterday, a revised letter from all the partners yesterday that was submitted to the state. And I believe they're currently reviewing the final packet as of today. I don't know if Shelley has additional information related to that.
That's an excellent summary, Ramiro. We expect that we will have an answer from the Department of Health tomorrow on our Phase Three application acceptance or denial. And I expect that it will be accepted.
Any questions or comments from either Commissioner? Okay. Doctor, go ahead.
I'm not a Commissioner, but I want to remind folks that, you know, the same thing. You really need to keep your distance. Really need to know that COVID is around. We are seeing more movement-based transmission. We are seeing five, five, four to five cases a day. And, you know, some of them are travel-related, some of them are household contacts. But there are community acquired, again, from all walks of life. You know, there, there are younger folks, but there are also older folks that are in there. And we just do not need to, well, it is important that we continue to follow the, the physical distancing guidance and wearing a face cover when you are out in public, when you have to be close to somebody. It is, it's just really, really important. And, you know, people don't just get sick, recover, and jump out of bed and be fine the next day. There are, there are lifelong consequences sometimes to some of the more severe illnesses. And young people do get severe illness as well. And they do get on the ventilator and come out and have to recuperate for a long time. So it's not, it's not just a cold.
And, and more younger people are getting it, now getting exposed to it.
Yeah, actually, if I, if I were to do a little chart in the last three weeks, the, the, the patient population that we're seeing has shifted. I mean, we did have the nursing home outbreak, so that like shifted it towards the older folks. But then after that quieted down, it's, it's been a lot of younger, younger individuals since, since we moved into Phase Two. So that, that's very disconcerting because there's, there's a lot of younger folks that are really reluctant to wear face coverings, and they are not following distancing guidelines. You need to choose which one you want to do. You got to do one of them. If you're, if you're not going to wear a face cover, then stay six feet apart. And even if you wear a face cover, you probably should stay six feet apart. But at the very least, put the face cover on if, if you're going to be out in public. And understand that there are people who cannot do that. You know, we, we do understand that. But it's important for all of us to protect each other. Thank you. Sorry, off my soap, soapbox.
So with great power comes great responsibility, right, Dr. Yu?
Everybody.
Commissioner Mensah, go ahead.
I just wanted to make the comment because I know a lot of people are interested in this issue that the questions from the state related to a development that happened after the preparation of our application, not because of an oversight or an omission on our part. It was something we really couldn't have predicted. And without going any further into it, we've done everything we can, I think, from the county perspective to, to try to, you know, move us into Phase Three. But I echo everything Dr. Yu said about trying to do that responsibly.
Thank you for that, but I will go a little bit deeper. That we were timely in getting our application in with all the information that we have to supply to the state sans one, one of our partners. And we had to wait some time for that. It was not the county intentionally dragging their feet. It was not the county refusing to do the work of the county to help our businesses and our citizens return to work. And by and large, the entire county, it seems, is understanding of that as we wait to, for our application to be approved. But everyone saw you get the, the errant individual that's not happy. It's not fast enough, and then, so I'm glad that we've had this discussion, and I hope he or she is watching. Thank you. Anything further from the seatmates? All right. Dr. Yu, thank you very much. Shelley, thank you very much. And you're welcome to stick around if you wish. But we're going to move on to homeless strategies with Keely Marino.
Good morning. Keely Marino with Public Health and Social Services. Don't have too much to report today. Just some overarching themes or projects that we're working on. One report is that with the Regional Housing Council met last Thursday evening, and we moved much closer in having a final draft for the Regional Housing Council to approve and move forward with. So that's very exciting. We're trying to move that as quickly and as thorough, like with thorough, thorough oversight as possible. The Commerce Grant, the Shelter Program Grant that we've been mentioning that is coming from the Department of Commerce. The grant itself, the application was released on Friday, the 19th. It is a three-year distribution of funds to increase shelter capacity in our county. Our county is slated to receive somewhere around $1.3 million over three years due to some quick math projections with, from Tom Webster, the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention Manager. We anticipate that could account for 19 to 22 extra beds in our community, which is very much needed. We still has, have as of yet to identify a single adult shelter for cold weather. And the temporary shelter at 2828 Martin Way will no longer be in existence as of the 2nd of November due to construction happening on that site. So that's timely, and we're hoping that we can find those beds prior to November 1. The Emergency Shelter Grant for COVID, that application, that's around $600,000 for COVID response within the Homeless Crisis Response System. That application is due July 1st. So we're meeting today as an office to discuss all of the funding that's in question for COVID response with regards to houseless individuals today so that we can ensure that our applications are solid, and we are meeting the needs of our community. We're continuing to meet with the City of Olympia on a weekly basis to ensure that we are talking about these funding, funding opportunities together and that we're working really closely with our largest city to ensure that we're meeting the needs of houseless individuals in our county. And then finally, our hygiene trailer, which was funded through LOT, will hopefully be installed by the end of June. We met last week to kind of iron out some of those nuances about installation, location, and operation with Pastor Amy from First Christian Church, Meg Martin from Interfaith Works, and City of Olympia staff and county staff. And that's about it for today.
Keely, of that $1.3 million time release grant, will that be in three equal distribution amounts? Or are they going to front-load it and then trickle down?
I understand it to be a, an annual release, but I could be, I could be wrong. I'm not sure. The, the way that they break it down is $56 per bed per night and/or $10,000 per new bed. So if we were to be able to stand up 19 or 22 new beds, then I, the $10,000 per bed would be, I'm assuming, fronted right there and then. So I could get some clarification on that.
Okay, thank you. Gary or Ty, questions?
My only question is, would we be able to utilize some of that money for treatment of those individuals, hopefully getting them back into society?
So the Commerce Grants can, the funding for that can go to capital. Go to, for new beds, it can go to rehab for a building that needs to be updated in order to be appropriate for shelter. It can go, it will go towards staffing of that shelter. It can go to case management services. So wraparound case management, which can refer folks into treatment or to housing projects or what have you, as well as outreach efforts to get folks inside into those shelter beds. So those are the approved funding for those grant monies.
Commissioner, go ahead.
So I know you said trying to find the beds. So you don't, I'm sure you don't have an answer to this concretely, but given what we know about what choices we have, what is, what is it likely to look like in terms of trying to stand up, as you say, 19 to 22 more beds? Is it going to be renting a space and improving it? Is it going to be finding a existing shelter space and seeing if they can, you know, tack on an adjacent space? I mean, obviously, you're not going to build anything really for $433,000 a year. So what is it likely to be in our community to make that happen?
So the way that I'm thinking about it is it could be broken down by sub-population. So Family Support Center might be, might find a space for five more beds. And CYS might be able to, Community Youth Services might find space for three more beds. And there's a strong emphasis in young, youth and young adults and how they are fitting into the system. There's a strong emphasis on folks fleeing intimate partner violence and domestic violence, which we have a dearth of beds available for that population right now. So if we break it down per sub-population, we could get to 19 to 22 beds pretty quickly, depending on the capacity of each agency. The, the funds can also go towards, because of the crisis, with understanding that it's difficult to cite and that retrofitting a, a building for a shelter can be quite costly. They are allowing for safe parking programs to count as of shelter beds and/or temporary encampments like the mitigation site. So we're not, not necessarily, we don't have plans at all at this point. We're just trying to get a picture in talking with each other and with service providers, what's possible. As I said before, we preliminarily had this conversation back in January and February, and things have changed. So we're coming back to the table with those providers to kind of see what is possible at this point.
Is this going to be a topic the Regional Housing Council will discuss?
It was a topic. We introduced it at the end of this last week's Regional Housing Council meeting.
And then, I guess, before you go, the hygiene trailer. I'm trying to imagine the property, and where does it actually going to be? And you said installed, and I know it's a pretty big, it, it's a pretty big thing. Where, where is it physically going to reside on, at the church?
So there are two possible locations. Initially, the, the, the location was to be in the parking garage, kind of butted, butted up against the New Hope Community location. So that temporary location where folks are staying in that parking garage with the doors facing Interfaith Works Shelter opening. There's also a second location that's been discussed. So I'm waiting to get clarification from Meg Martin and Pastor Amy on which location will be utilized.
I thank the First Christian Church for that and everything else they do for our community.
Absolutely.
It's amazing.
Commissioner Edwards, anything?
No, sir.
All right. Katie, thank you very kindly. Thank you very much.
Great day.
Okay, now we're going to move into reviewing the BOCC draft agenda for June 30th, which is one week from today. And with the big question mark, will we be opening the doors or not? Will we have seating available with proper distancing? And I know we will if we're open, but we're waiting to find out if we're approved or when we're approved for Phase Three. And Ramiro, you might have more light to shed on that.
Yes.
As for opening the county doors. As for opening the county, uh, doors.
Yes, sir. Um, if, um, if we, uh, you heard from Shelley, if we get a, uh, uh, a green light tomorrow, um, I was thinking that probably a forty-eight hour, uh, preparation period will be adequate. But that will put us into Friday, which it really does not make sense to open county offices this Friday. So most likely we'll open county offices this coming Monday, which is June twenty-ninth. And that is the reason why, assuming that will be the case, we have this irregular agenda for you to review, um, for next Tuesday, two in the afternoon. And that will go back somewhat to a normal setting. So under Phase Three, uh, there is allowance for the board to meet. In person, however, you need to wear masks, cloth maskings, that will be a requirement. And, uh, as we conduct the meetings, uh, we're going to be working here in Room Two Eighty as to how we're going to be able to, uh, set chairs. They will provide six-foot distancing. In the event that we have additional members of the public, they would like to provide testimony before you, we have 152 on the first floor of this building as an overflow. And we will have all the, uh, video equipment working, so they will, should be able to follow up, uh, the, the, the meetings. And, and when their names are up, maybe they can come and provide public testimony to you. We're working on all the logistics in preparation for you to have, um, that option. Also, we're going to be exploring whether you'd like to join also as a Zoom meeting as part of your regular board meeting. That is something that we need to explore, um, whether we have that, uh, video feed, uh, normal as we have in the past in combination with the, the, with the Zoom meeting. We just have to be, uh, see the logistics if, if one of you would like to join via Zoom meeting and not be part of this room. But again, um, also, uh, next Tuesday morning, your, your, your agenda setting, if we get approved under, um, Phase Three, all the board members could join into the, their Room Two Eighty to have this meeting. All of you here in this room will make sure that you have, uh, six-foot distancing. Um, it also, uh, it will require for all of us in this room to wear a cloth masking. Um, and also, uh, Zoom on your agenda setting will be available for staff to join. We will not be asking the staff to come and, and, and participate in Room Two Eighty. And again, um, Zoom meetings will be available. So we need to work on that hybrid approach, see how that works as we try to come back to some sort of normalcy. Uh, but again, uh, my hope is that we're going to approve tomorrow. And also my hope is that we can have, uh, an in-person, uh, board meeting next Tuesday, two in the afternoon.
That will, what's, was normal is going to seem strange now.
Yeah.
As we adjust. So, uh, fingers crossed, we get that approval and we'll open Monday.
Yeah.
So with that, the, um,
Any, any questions on that?
No.
Okay, and, and I will keep.
Go ahead. Commissioner Menzger, go ahead.
Well, I, I, I just wanted to say that I, if there is an option to zoom in, uh, I, I tend to do that. So I do appreciate finding out whether that's going to be feasible. If not, it's okay, but I, I think that for me, I just, I'd be more comfortable, especially if, you know, that way people, there's no reason for me to add more risk to folks that are coming in for public comment. Um, and like I say, I, it's going to be a temptation to, to, to think of everything as normal, but it's not, as we all know. So, um, you know, it's, I, I, I'd like us to be able to do a hybrid, at least for, you know.
We will explore that, Commissioner Menzger. Um, the only thing that in my mind, what is, is, is working, how we're going to be able to have the video feed of the normal, um, meeting here in combination, if you join via Zoom meeting, because it will be important for, for all three of you, no matter where you are, to be part of that feed, uh, video feed. So that's what probably the, the logistical details, that, uh, whether we can do that or not, or we, we can switch back and forth. Um, anyway, so give us some time to explore that. Uh, but certainly, uh, if we get to the point of having an option for any commissioners to join via Zoom, uh, we will do so.
And for a point of clarification, uh, you're correct, uh, Commissioner Menzger, we're not returning to normal. Um, because normal is supposed to be Phase Four, where it's like life as it used to be. And, uh, there's no parameters or guidelines for Phase Four yet, so I'm not sure we'll see anything, uh, before 2021. But we're getting normaler.
Well, yeah, as, as a matter of clarification, even on Phase Four, it's not quite what it used to be. Because even under Phase Four, my understanding, we, we need to continue to practice physical distancing.
Right, yeah. Okay, so with that, we've got the, uh, June thirtieth agenda to review, and we'll, uh, call the meeting to order at two o'clock at this point in time.
Yes, sir.
And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Menzger, approval of the minutes. And then we will have an opportunity for the public to address the board. Are we aware of any comments that might be coming in?
Uh, not at this point, sir.
Okay.
But certainly, if it's your first time, you will receive perhaps a significant public testimony.
That would be my, uh, that would be my expectation. Uh, County Managers' Update.
I will, I will try to provide a little bit of history as to how we, the board has conducted business while we have been shut down. And, uh, at a, at a high level, um, a report.
All right, and then we will, uh, item number three, consent items. At this point, uh, we will approve presumably the voucher list uh, for June fifteenth.
Yeah, for your consideration. If you have any comments related to that particular, uh, voucher, let us know, so we can address those questions before next Tuesday.
Okay, then, uh, Agenda Item Number Four, under the Department Items is CPED, Set Public Hearing for the Rochester Subarea Plan.
Yeah, for your consideration, Commissioners, is for you to set a public hearing for July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three in the afternoon in this room. For you to receive public testimony related to the, uh, Rochester Subarea Plan. The Rochester Subarea Plan was an item, uh, uh, that you added on the twenty-twenty-two thou- two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-one official comprehensive plan amendment docket, which we approved, I believe, over a little, over a month ago. And this has been a, uh, an item the staff has been working, uh, for the last couple of years. It has been a lot of, uh, public outreach and public, uh, community engagements. Uh, there has been, um, uh, open houses, which they, they have been attended, um, well-attended by the, the, uh, members of the Rochester community. One was held on February twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen. The next, March eighth, two thousand and eighteen, then November seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and November thirteen, two thousand and nineteen. And also the Planning Commission, uh, has reviewed this amendment. They held a public hearing, um, on June, uh, January eighth, two thousand and twenty. And as a result of that, they have submitted a recommendation for you to consider approval of this proposal. Um, and I believe, uh, Shannon, uh, Shula is with us today. She is the planner who, from CPED, who has been working on this particular plan. Uh, if you have any questions, uh, she's able, uh, she's here to answer these questions.
Good morning, Shannon. Do my seatmates have any questions for, uh, Shannon?
No.
Well, thanks for joining us. Do you have anything to add, Shannon?
No, I don't. I think it's pretty straightforward, and we've had, um, recommendation from Planning Commission and the citizens. Um, I think we'll have a, a pretty good turnout and, um, support for this project.
I was very happy to see, uh, so much, uh, community involvement at the open house. That was pretty cool.
Yes, we have had great turnout at all of these events, so it's very supported by the community.
Those folks are very involved.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for that. Thanks for joining us. Uh, that takes us to number five. The County Manager, uh, this is the, uh, South Puget Sound Community College Facility Rental Agreement.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. This is an item related to the Auditor's Office, particularly related to the election cycle plan, uh, Mary Hall's Auditor's, uh, uh, office. Um, as you may recall, the emergency of COVID-19 has put us in the position to reinvent our business and, 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 and yet continue to provide services for our citizens. And one of the fundamental, um, uh, services that we provide to our citizens, elections. And, and, and elections, we need to have a voting center that is available to our citizens who wants to exercise their, their constitutional right to, to vote. But maintaining a six-foot distancing becomes a challenge. In the, in the normal circumstances, we, we, we have Room 152 on Building One. They, we can use that as a somewhat of a voting center when the citizens come in, exercise their, their right, and move on, both on the, on the, on, on the primary election as well as the general election. Well, 152 is very restrictive, and we really don't have the space to, uh, facilitate the physical distances required, uh, to protect no just, uh, the citizens as well as our employees and the volunteers who help us manage the, the voting center. So it has been a task as to how we can find a place, you know, remote outside of, of, of the county that can allow the county auditor to conduct his constitutional mandate uh, and the voting center. So we found a space, uh, in coordination with South Puget Sound Community College. It will allow us to use that and again, protect the, the, uh, the, the, the members of the public as, as well as our, our employees in practicing physical distancing. So this particular, uh, item for you is to consider signing a lease agreement uh, with the South Puget Sound Community College for, uh, $50,000. And there are specific, uh, buildings we're going to be able to use on the South Puget Sound Community College, and it also is specific dates in which we want to be able to use that. So at this point, Building Twenty-seven, Rooms One Twelve, One Thirteen, and One Fourteenth of their campus, of their campus, and also Build, Building Twenty-Six, Room One O Three, will be able to use, um, between Monday, uh, through Friday, uh, from July sixth through August twenty-first. And also Monday through Friday from October fifth to December fourth. And again, this lease agreement is with the South Puget Sound Community College for $50,000, and it will take us all the way to December fourth, two thousand and twenty. And I believe that is a, uh, a, a great, great solution to what has been a very tasking, uh, way to find ways to, um, and again, meet the, uh, uh, provide the services during the primary and, uh, general election to the, uh, and the Auditor's Office. Um, you have this item, um, for you, for your consideration next week. However, the county auditor, uh, would like for you to consider taking an action today on this particular item, because the sense of urgency is having this agreement in place, or with the, the Auditor's Office can start moving all the pieces, so they can be ready for the August primary election, because there's a lot of logistical items that needs to take place. And without having a, a, a lease agreement in play, uh, right now, we will never, we will not be able to access those facilities on the South Puget Sound Community College. Diana Benson is here. Uh, if you have any questions or if you would like to add additional information related to this item.
Anne, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, so I just want to say thank you to the Commissioners for helping us work on the solution with the partnership with the college. Uh, we have over a thousand people that go through Room 152 as the voting center, um, and we're expecting more this year. Uh, and this is very close to, um, our current, it's right between the courthouse and our ballot processing center, so it's a good solution for visibility. Uh, and we have dedicated funds, uh, for the CARES money for this purpose. But it is a lot of setup, so we do have, um, you know, a huge sense of urgency to start the cabling, because our, uh, voting center opens to the public twenty days before. So we will be live the middle of July there.
Oh.
And Ramiro has a map if you're interested in seeing it.
Okay. The, uh, elections and voting are at the heart of our democracy, and I, I love this, uh, connection with the, uh, South Puget Sound Community College. It's an excellent idea. I'm really happy with this, and I, well, pardon my seatmates, Wayne, I'm, I'm willing to take the action on this today, but let me turn to my seatmates. Question or comments? Uh, okay, Commissioner Edwards.
Uh, I had an opportunity to discuss this in length with, uh, our auditor, Mary Hall, yesterday. And I agree, I think we ought to move forward on this so that they can be more prepared as we get closer to this election cycle. It's going to be somewhat different, like everything else we're doing.
Yeah. Commissioner Menzger, go ahead, sir.
My comment's going to be a motion.
Okay, good.
That's okay.
You want, do you want to do that now, or do you want to do that with the, uh, the briefing, the decisions that we're going to take? The actions will take in just a few more minutes.
I will recommend for you to take an action right now, because it's part of your.
Let's do it right now, then. Go ahead, Ty.
I move to approve the relocation of the Elections Voter Services of the Thurston County Auditor's Office from its current location to South Puget Sound Community College for the 2020 August primary and November general elections. And authorize the County Manager to sign a facility rental agreement through December four, 2020, at a cost of $50,000.
Second.
If they move down, second, to approve the South Puget Sound Community College Facility Rental Agreement. Any further discussion? No, I would just add that, uh, I think, uh, Auditor Mary Hall was very progressive in reaching out to all three of us Commissioners. Uh, I'm presuming you too, Commissioner Menzger.
Yeah.
Uh, yesterday, and explaining it and answering all kinds of questions. Uh, so this is just way cool. So with that.
She would like to be here today. Sorry, um, but she's actually in, she had a scheduling conflict with an elections meeting with the state.
Oh, okay. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Diana.
Thank you.
Five B on the agenda is, uh, we'll report back on our, uh, Commissions and Boards that we've been attending, if any. And then, uh, Ramiro will go through our schedule for the following week, and then we adjourn. Pretty, at this point in time, it's a pretty short agenda.
Yes, sir.
Next is Proclamations and Awards, and let me see, do we have any of a resolution?
No, I don't, we don't have anything for you.
Later. So proclamation awards, okay. Advisory Board and Commissions, anything there, Ramiro?
No, sir.
PIO update. We have Brian in the house, I, I saw.
Um, good morning, Commissioners, County Manager, um, Brian Dominique, Public Information Officer for the Board. Uh, just a few quick updates for you this morning. Um, the Yelm-Tinino Trail, um, with the Deschutes River, um, uh, crossing on that trail that runs parallel to Washington State Route 507. Um, that's going to close tomorrow, June twenty-fourth, um, for the summer. That's expected to close for, until September. They have aging pilings underneath the trestle that need to be replaced. Um, so that's what that work is. So just letting the public know about that. Um, and then Medic One, on Tuesday, June sixteenth, uh, they began hosting their, uh, adult compression-only CPR training again. Classes are limited to five participants and one instructor, and face coverings are required and social distancing measures are in place. And then, uh, if the county has approved to move to Phase Three, class sizes can move up to fifteen. Um, and face masks and social distancing, uh, requirements will still be in place. And people can learn how to sign up for classes on their website at Thurston County, or for Thurston County Medic One. And then, um, Megan Porter, our Public Information Supervisor, uh, she's continuing to support the county's COVID-19 response and is currently working with, uh, Megan Johnson, who is our dedicated, dedicated communicator, uh, for COVID-19 through the end of the year. And then, as the County Manager mentioned earlier, I'm working with TC Media and, uh, our Clerk of the Board, uh, to ensure physical distancing can be maintained using our overflow room in 152. I am preparation for the county opening the public. Uh, have been any questions, that's all I have.
That's good to hear, they're getting the press going. Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
I, uh, I just bring this up because I'm wondering how my seatmates might feel about this, but we've been writing a article for, uh, every month for the county's newsletter. And I just wonder if there might be any interest in doing that every other month by the Commissioners rather than every month.
Uh, well, I, I like doing it every month, uh, because I'm just, well, I'm the one, I prefer, I love writing. And there's different things I like to showcase, and so that's, that's where my head is, is every month. But, uh, go ahead, Ty.
Uh, you're talking about the insider for the county staff?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, I, I'll think about it. I don't, I could go either way on that. Um, sometimes it's, but I, I guess, uh, I'll put a little thought into it and maybe report back to you. I'm, I'm, I'm open to that suggestion.
It's, uh, I'm glad you brought that up, though, Gary, because it's one of those things that, you know, it's, ah, when things are really. when things are really bustling, it's one more thing to do. But when I'm done, I'm, I'm very glad that I put something out to the staff or to our, to our employees as well. So I'm, I'm willing to, to go every other month, but I'm also willing to continue to just put information out and showcase different employees and different things for our employees as well. Even though it's one more thing, I don't want them to be an interruption in my day. But we'll discuss that further then. Thank you. Anything else, Brian?
No, that's it. I have some information on the census if you want to hear it, but it's nothing I haven't really presented already, so.
Okay, anything further from the commissioners to Brian? Nope.
We got a, we got an email regarding the census about, I think it, about some videotaping and it wasn't, you know, it was at a higher level. I can't remember if it was a state level, I, some. State level. I was wondering if my seatmates were, had, it's been sitting in my inbox and I think I ultimately decided not to respond to it, but I was wondering if either my seatmates had agreed.
Did you, Gary?
No, I'm good.
I did it. I was last Friday and there was an hour put in the book for the appointment and I sat in my office here and worked with staff from a company up in Seattle. And it was very fun. It was very engaging. And I did several, several lines and they're going to, and paragraphs and spoke from the heart and they're going to cut and paste and be part of, I guess, several electors from around the state and they're going to put these out as PSAs on the center. But it was fun. It only took about thirty minutes, really, twenty-five, thirty minutes.
Okay, well, that's kind of why I asked, just to see if it was it, was it an hour that's really three hours or was it an hour that's really half an hour? So that's, makes a big difference.
Yeah, it was an hour that took actually about twenty-five or thirty minutes and it was fun. Those folks were, they were just dynamite to work with.
Great. Okay, good. Thanks.
That takes us to legislative update. Anything, Ramiro?
No, I, I think we're keeping you in there. Perhaps it's going to be a, a special session by legislature, maybe early August. One needs to occur. I think the conversation right now is when? And the legislature is going to have to come back and address some of the funding gaps the state has received. As you know, the latest is probably in the, in the four billion plus they, they got on their budget. The governor has taken already, has taken some action related to state employees in terms of furbles and freezing some cost of living increases for non-represented employees. So I think everything is moving in that direction as soon as I have a, a, a good intel in terms of when that, that session will occur. I'll keep you posted, but also we're working with our legislative liaison, Deborah Mangia, to see if we can introduce some legislative actions that can help the county dealing with the impacts of the pandemic to our revenues.
And hopefully we'll get some movement from OFM on that four hundred and twenty million dollars they're sitting on that should be distributed to the counties.
Two forty.
Two forty. Oh, I had it backwards.
Yeah.
Was it four twenty? Okay, two forty, thank you. Still, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that takes us to our agendas for today, our actions. And there's only four action items, so let's take care of business there before we take a break. Number one's extending a declaration of local emergency.
Yeah, commissioners, you have taken an action in the past to declare a state of emergency in Thurston County as a result of the pandemic. And for your consideration today is for you to extend the emergency declaration until October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. The reason, October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, that will give us the ability to respond to the emergency by using the CARES fund, the CARES funds, the CRF funding that you approved last week. And there's a lot of purchases, there's a lot of procurement needs to occur. And this particular emergency provides a little flexibility to offices and departments as to how we need to meet that very restrictive deadline imposed by Department of Commerce, which is October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, where we need to spend fifteen point seven million dollars. So this is, you, you have already taken action twice on this ordinance. One, when you took the initial emergency and then you extended it. Now I'm requesting for you to consider extending one, once again. And again, this time will be through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. A copy of the, of the ordinance is included on, on your packet. And again, I can probably walk you through the, the background of this ordinance, but I believe you're already aware what the content of this ordinance is.
Hey, question or comment?
It's a resolution, no ordinance.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
And this is not going to affect any of our regular business that we do in front of the public or any actions that we might take. It's just so that we can expand that CARES money up until that particular deadline. Is that right?
That is correct. And also it, it, it keeps, it keeps, you know, track of the governor's actions. And, and this really, you know, on the past, you took an action on opening county facility, closing county facilities. This fixes that, meaning under phase three, you get approved, then you don't need to take any other actions related to county facilities. And also it will continue to have the procurement clause. But nothing in, in here is also specifies the Open Meetings Act. There has to be in accordance to the waivers the governor has stated.
Okay.
So it really is more in alignment to everything what the governor has stated.
Kind of a housekeeping thing, so.
Yeah, but again, is, because the emergency has not passed, as you know. And it will maybe, I may, I may ask you to extend this beyond October thirty-first because we don't know where it will be in the fall. But again, I will appreciate if you take action today and extended this emergency resolution.
Commissioner Mansour, anything?
No.
All right. All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve a resolution extending local emergency declaration related to the COVID nineteen pandemic through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
It's been moved down second to extend the declaration of local emergency to October, through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Any further discussion on that topic? No, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Number two, approve Paradigm Scale House and Accounting Software Upgrade.
Yeah, I think your commissioners, you reviewed this item last week and there's a request from Public Works for you to authorize moving forward and upgrade the current software called Paradigm Software. And that, and that is the software that we use to process all the payments on the waste and recovery center, also not as they work. This software was put in place back in two thousand and eight. And as any technology, two thousand and eight doesn't seem too long ago, but in terms of technology, it does centuries ago, if I may. So it is really is, is, is a dire need, I believe, from a technology point of view. And they, and the department would like for you to consider authorizing moving forward with this upgrade. Last week, you asked to put on your motion, how much will it cost? And it says it is a hundred sixteen thousand and eighty-five dollars. And you also asked on the motion to identify the funding source, which is the solid waste tipping fees. Karen and Tim are here to answer any questions that you may have on it. Or maybe, maybe Karen, just Karen.
Or Karen, do you have anything to add before we ask questions?
No, just that this, as Ramiro stated, this is the software that manages over almost twenty-six million dollars in solid waste, annual solid waste tipping fees for us. And we're excited with the idea of the upgrade because it will just increase the efficiencies and the functionality and the reporting abilities and capabilities that we have on behalf of our, our growing customer base at the solid waste facilities. So we appreciate the, the commissioners considering this request.
Any questions of either Karen or Tim, my seatmates? No? No? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Paradigm Scale House and Accounting Software Upgrade from version five point oh to six point oh and authorize the Public Works Director to move forward with the upgrade at an estimated cost of one hundred sixteen thousand eighty-five dollars funded through solid waste tipping fees.
Second.
They moved down second to approve the Paradigm Scale House and Accounting Software Upgrade. Any further discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Number three, oh, thank you, Karen, thank you, Tim. Extend provisions of ordinance one five eight eight seven to mitigate conditions caused by COVID nineteen.
Yeah, commissioners, you passed an ordinance, number five, one five eight eight seven back in April second, two thousand and twenty. And the ordinance really was in response to the effects of the, of COVID nineteen to the red payers that we have in our utilities. And through this ordinance, you provided, you provided, gave the direction to Public Works to provide some flexibility to those red payers, which includes, you know, non-shot offs for non-payments for sixty days. So it created really some flexibility for the, for the cities who have been affected by this pandemic, who have been laid off and perhaps they are struggling to pay the utilities. So this particular ordinance had a deadline of lapse on June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty. But in May, in May twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty, the governor Enslie extended the same order until July twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty. So this particular resolution really continues to implement those, those activities to help our citizens at red payers, but extended all the way to July twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty. And again, that is in alignment to the governor's order, which is order two zero dash two three point four. That's really is extending what you have already passed and Tim is here to answer any questions or additional information that I missed.
Anything additional?
I guess I had to ask one, one question. This is about, just about water, right?
What, water is sewer?
We don't ever cut anybody's sewer off, do we?
No, but it's a, it's a, it's a red payer.
It's a rate, but, okay, just, it's about water mainly, right?
That is, is inclusive of.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mansour, any questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion?
I move to extend the provisions of ordinance one five eight eight seven to align with Governor Enslie's proclamation, number twenty dash twenty-three point four and any extensions thereof regarding rate payer assistance and preservation of essential services.
Second.
It's been moved down second to extend provisions to mitigate conditions caused by the COVID nineteen to align with Governor's proclamation. Any further discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, the motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to number four, which is approval of the voucher list for June the eighth, the week of. Any discussion or questions? Polls, corrections? No? Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the voucher list for the week of June eighth, two thousand and twenty for a combined amount of one million, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars and six cents.
Second.
They moved down second to approve the voucher list for the week of June eighth, two thousand and twenty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you. That concludes the, the business portion and decision making. Now we're going to move into the commissioners' items after we take a fifteen minute break. In fifteen minutes, I've got a call to make and there's other things to take care of. So we'll be back at ten fifteen, ten fifteen. Thank you.
Are we off camera?
And welcome back. This is continuing on the Board of County Commissioners' agenda-setting work session for June 23, 2020. And we're picking up with the commissioner items and starting off with the 2020 discharge of fireworks.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. I brought this item to your attention last week, and this is a yearly assessment. On the, the board passed a resolution back in 2016, resolution number one five three zero eight. This particular resolution, it states the, the following, part, particular word. And it says the, the county manager, after consulting with the fire marshal or other officials as may be deemed appropriate, may prohibit the discharge of concerned fireworks during, during the period of, of extreme fire danger. The prohibition shall be in effect one day prior to the date concerned fireworks may be legally sold under RCW seven zero point seven seven. So the RCW seven zero point seven seven point three nine five states that the, their first day in which legal fireworks can be sold in Thurston County will be on the 28th of June, which is coming up. So as a result of this, this particular ordinance, to be clear, does in ban the sales and distribution of fireworks. This particular ordinance authorizes the county managers to ban the discharge of fireworks under extreme weather conditions. So every year, we go through the process, and I communicate with the Director of Emergency Management, Kurt Harding, and also with Thurston County Fire Marshal, also CP Director Josh Cummins. And what we, what we go through, they go through and assess all the Department of Natural Resources data to determine what is the fire conditions in Thurston County. We have done that, and at this point, we have a minimal overall fire danger in Thurston County. And also on the projection of the next seven days, the conditions are such that perhaps will not be changing. Those conditions are increasing the fire danger in Thurston County. Some of the elements that we, they will look, it will be, we'll look at models, and again, by the Department of Natural Resources, that is the energy release component, also known as ERC. And at this point, that is very low, lower than normal conditions. And also the percent of, of the significant fires that will occur in the region. And at this point, that's also very low, lower than the normal conditions. So as a result, the, the Department of, Director of Emergency Services, Kurt Harding, as well as the Fire Marshal, Josh Cummins, has suggested to the county manager to not put a ban on discharge of fireworks because we do not have extreme fire conditions. And I concurred with that recommendation, and at this point, we will not be issuing a ban on the discharge of fireworks on the 2020 season. Any questions?
Any questions from the commissioners?
No, sir.
Trustee, opinion of the Fire Marshal, thank you.
Do you have any information to add, Josh? I mean, Fire Marshal Josh? Do you actually have a Fire Marshal hat, helmet?
No, no helmet, but I do want to say thank you again to the county manager and the commissioners. This in the past has been kind of a difficult decision, but what we've done and been able to do is create a data-driven decision-making process. So using all these different models and water availability, that's how we came to this recommendation. So thank you for the time.
Yes, thank you for that. It's, it's a dicey, very, people are very passionate about this topic as well. So I appreciate the, it being data-driven. Thank you. Okay, takes care of that one. No fireworks ban for unincorporated Thurston County?
Discharge of fireworks.
Discharge of fireworks, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Next Superior Court, additional judge support letter.
Yeah, commissioners, you, you, on your regular Superior Court updates that you have with Pam Harmon-Bayer, who has joined us today, as well as the presiding judge, Judge Price, they're brought to your attention maybe early in the year. Then perhaps they may be coming back to the board to request a, a support letter. As you know, Thurston County is growing, and as a result, the, all the different trials the Superior Court is conducting is also increasing. And, and there is a need, perhaps the legislature, to consider adding a new Superior Court judge to Thurston County. Pam can give you a little more of the details in terms of, of, of the population, the disparity with other counties. So this proposal before you is for you to consider signing a letter, draft letters included in your packet, for you to send to the State Court Administrator urging to engage the legislature to consider adding a new Superior Court judge in Thurston County. There is a couple of, you know, funding issues, the, also you need to make sure that you are tracking on this, Superior Court judges. Half of their salary is paid by the state, and half of their salary is paid by Thurston County through the general fund. And Pam, on the email to me, is extremely cognizant on the, on the, on the budget conditions that we have, and she has provided us some salary savings on some positions that she's currently holding vacant. And that is the, I believe, is the fiscal manager is vacant at this point as a way to mitigate the impact on the general fund. If the legislature take an action in 2021, then perhaps they'll start moving the wheels as to when this particular possession may be coming. So you may, the board may not be in the possession to exercise the budgetary action on this Superior Court judge or the new Superior Court judge, maybe in the next two, three years, at the earliest. So I believe at this point, it is important for the board to consider this option. It is, it is just, I think it is, it is important for Thurston County to request a new Superior Court judge. So I will strongly encourage you to consider this letter, and again, I will drop this letter for your consideration. A draft is attached on your packet. And Pam Harmon-Bayer is here to add additional information, or perhaps answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question.
That, and I'll just give a little bit of more information, and then I'm happy to answer any other questions there are. Let me just pull up my document one more time. Our last judgeships were created in 1996, and the Board of County Commissioners did not actually fund those two positions until July 2000 and July 1996. But in order for us to proceed, we do need a letter of support from the Board of County Commissioners saying that the funding can be available or is available. I know that now is really a difficult time to ask for that support. But what we had planned on doing before kind of these initial budget cuts came is we had consolidated our budget office into one department with both juvenile and Superior Court. And we had not filled our administrative services manager position, which is a little over $120,000 with salary and benefits. The county's portion of a judgeship position is one-half of the salary, as Romero stated. The AOC or the legislature covers the other half, and they cover all of the benefits. We realized that by creating additional judgeship, there could be additional positions as well, and we're not in a position to have funding for those, and we realize that additional conversations need to occur around that. But currently, just to provide some statistics, we have 11 judicial officers. And the judicial need from Administrative Office of the Courts based on our caseloads are 13.95 judicial officers. So we are almost three judicial officers short of the volume of cases that we are hearing. And the backlog because of this pandemic is going to be difficult to overcome, being short judicial officers. So at a minimum, we're asking for your support, saying even though times are difficult, we're going to do our best to try to fund this, and, and we're, in the best case scenario, we're asking you to say we will use the funding we have set aside in the future to help support this judgeship.
Any questions of, of Pam? I have one, Pam. If this is approved, they, the AOC, they pick up the 50% of the salary and all benefits. Now, does that person then have to go through election, or is it an appointed until the election? How do we get that, that position filled?
It's an election.
It's, I'm sorry?
It's an election.
Election, okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Pam, you've explained this to me, but maybe you could explain a little clearer that this is a, in order to get a judge, it's a two, it's a two-step process, and, you know, right now, we don't have the control. If we wanted to put a judge in place, we would have to go through this predicate step. 24.7% filing increase since the last position. And we have, you know, that really suggests we need two, at least two judges, but to at least put ourselves, at least to give ourselves the control over placing one judge is what makes sense to me. You know, so if you could explain that kind of two-step process, it would be helpful.
Yes, that's correct. So in order for the county commissioners to even fund an additional judgeship or for an additional judgeship to be created in Thurston County or any county in Washington, they need to, we need to request support from the legislature, and that's under RCW 2.08.065. They have to change the laws that allow for a ninth judgeship to be created, and then at that point, the county commissioners provide the funding for the additional half of salary. So it is a two-step process. It's a legislative change and authority and budget from the state, and then it's the budget authority from the county commissioners. But this is a letter of support that says we're going to do our very best to, to provide that funding when that position is supported by the legislature.
Anything more, Ty?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards?
Several years ago, the court had an analysis done of their operation. What was said in that particular report? Several years ago, uh, the court had an analysis done of their operation. What was said in that particular report?
We were still short not only judicial officers, but staffing. I think one of the things that the court has proven over the last two years, since we did our study with the National Center for State Courts, is that we're trying very hard to manage the, within the resources we have. But there's only so much we can do in terms of resolving cases. But it did say we were still short, it didn't really look at number of judicial officers, but it looked at our staffing levels to say that we were short on staffing levels.
Thank you.
Pam, I have another question. If we get through this two-step process and everything goes according to HOIL and it's great, how soon would the, uh, would that be on a ballot? Is that a special election or does it just go through the normal process? What happens?
It, it's up to the, it's up to the county commissioners is my understanding. As, as you can tell from when we got the last two positions, they were granted in 1996. And one was delayed in, in when the funding came from the county. So if it needs to be conducted during a normal election in order to not create extra costs in the special election, I think that is entirely up to the Board of County Commissioners. And Robin, please correct me if you feel like I've misstated that because you may know more about the process.
That it? Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
So I will ask the, the, the board to provide some direction and support of this proposal.
I give a thumbs up. What's yours, Gary? Thumbs up? Okay.
So, okay, we'll, we'll finalize the letter, um, for your signature and then we'll, we'll send that to Pam.
Great, thank you.
I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Item number three is a regional airport discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep.
This has been a, um, attached for you in your packet is the April 29, 2020 PowerPoint, which the State Department of Transportation provided some perspective as to a potential, um, commercial airport located on, on, in the, in, in the Little Rock area of Thurston County. Through the conversations, um, you know, you saw the, the large print this perhaps may include in the, in, um, DOT would like to have somewhat of a, uh, not a decision whether you're supporting or not an airport in, in the county, whether you like to be, if Thurston County Board of County Commissioners be included as sponsors of this idea when they go through their novel public hearing process down the road. You asked last time you visit, you, you addressed this item, I believe two weeks ago, that you would like to confirm whether July, early July deadline for your sponsorship decision is adequate or not. Jenica, who's joined us today via Zoom, has reached out again and has confirmed that they would like to have some sort of, uh, uh, decision to be a potential sponsor or not to this idea. And, uh, and then the name will be added to documentation as they move forward and to explore even further this idea. We've had received.
Go ahead, Romero, I'm sorry.
Sorry. We have received, um, some emails related to this matter in the last week or so. I'll say probably a total of 10 emails into the commissioner's office. And it's just about, I'll say eight were in opposition of this idea and two were in support of this idea. And anyway, so at this point, any questions?
Let me ask Jenica, do you have anything to add, Jenica?
Uh, no, I think Romero summed up the communication that I received.
Uh, okay, well, I've got a couple of questions, but I'll first go to my seatmates. Did you have your hand up, Gary?
I guess I, I would just comment that I'm, uh, I'm interested, but I'm certainly not interested enough to be pushed into a decision without having much public input at this point in time.
Commissioner Menzner, you have anything to add or questions?
This is just a question. I'm not asking anyone to answer it, but it, I kind of have a question about how many, I'd kind of like to see like the list of sites that they're, that they're proposing, you know, because I, I mean, obviously Western Washington at some point is going to need an airport, you know, or an expand, or a greater capacity. We know that, like there. I don't really like the idea of having it, uh, right, uh, south of, of Olympia, but, but if there's no other feasible alternative, that's a different maybe calculation in my head than, than just kind of knee-jerk, you know, no, don't put it in my community because it's loud and, you know. I mean, you kind of have to balance the need, what the needs are of this whole state, frankly. So I'm just, it's a matter of curiosity. I haven't heard much, um, I haven't heard much in support of, of the idea, um, from community members. I've been at the various groups that I go to, uh, including TRPC, Thurston Regional Planning Council, and there was another, I think, intercity transit. I, several boards, I brought this up just to say, hey, let your, because that, boards I sit on with other elected officials, they said, hey, tell your, tell, you know, talk to your councils, talk to your constituents, tell them to give us some input because I really, like Commissioner Edwards said, I'd really like to hear what the community thinks. So it's a hard thing to kind of, it's a kind of hard thing to be put on the spot for without having really any conception. For example, I mean, Pete Komet, uh, at TRPC made the, I think I made this point at a board meeting, but he made the point that this was studied in the 90s and the, um, because of the airflow patterns, the, the way the planes would have to come in would be right over the top of downtown Olympia and over the Capitol. That's something that wasn't presented at the Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission. It's something I would have no knowledge of, but for that sort of historical perspective in that prior study. So things like that are really important pieces of information that we don't have. So, um, I don't know, that's just kind of a, several unconnected points that I have in reaction to this.
Jenica, uh, can you tell me, do you know, I know you don't speak for these entities, but where the Visitor Convention Bureau, the Chamber, or EDC, Economic Development Council, how they view this?
Uh, they haven't weighed in on this topic.
Have they been part and parcel of any presentation? Do you know?
Not, um, with anybody from the, not with myself when the commission gave their initial presentation. And so, uh, the only two points that we've spoken with them was that initial briefing and then again with the commissioners.
Because a few months ago, I saw this presentation that, uh, these folks put on at the Port of Olympia and then ours here at the, our commissioners, uh, briefing. And I'm intrigued by it, but just like my seatmates, I'm not ready to commit to anything just yet. It's just too, uh, too much at the embryonic stage. And I don't know if they've had any community outreach at all. And I know the soonest, I mean, if everything fell into place and everybody wanted this, would be 30 years down the road. I would just like more information before I sign in support or even take a stand dead set against it. I just need more information. And, and the majority of that's going to be, what do the people want? If they don't want it, well, it's not going to happen. And I'd like to just get more, more data and do a little more digging. So that's where I am. Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Romero.
Um, I, I, I understand the, the desire to get additional information, this whole data. But at, at this point, we're struggling in, in getting what you need because DOT is the one who is delivering this.
Yeah, I'm not looking for anything that we would do. They need to give us information.
So, you know, my suggestion is, uh, you don't need to take an action. You just could consider be neutral and no action is just moving on. And, and, and at that point, you're not committing for or against it. And that, uh, uh, is also an option for you and you may want to consider that. A no action is, is in a neutral position.
I also see a neutral as, uh, not an affirm, an affirmation. So a neutral is no. And I'm okay with saying no. But what, what am I, seatmates, you want to be neutral? Gary, you have a, oh, you're opening your Coke.
I, I just don't have enough information and I think we're in the middle of something that we've never dealt with before, this whole pandemic business. And I think this year is not the year to be pushing to do one way or the other. Because, I mean, you, I haven't even been able to talk to people for the last, you know, months. And, uh, we're not at our normal activities where we're interacting with folks to even get the slightest sense of how people would feel about this. And, and Commissioner Menzner mentions that Mayor Komet, he had some information that we were never even provided. And that really bothers me that we would be asked to take some type of a stand on something with the minimal information that we were given. And that would be a very, uh, important piece of that information on the flight plan. So, uh, I don't get it that we, that we have to feel we're under the gun to do something in this timeframe for something that's not going to be done for 20 years anyway. So right in the middle of this pandemic, I mean, that's kind of like, uh, you know, trying to decide to buy a new car, but you just lost your job, I guess, you know?
Yeah. Commissioner Menzner, anything further?
I just, yeah, I think that, uh, that I'm not going to be in a position to give a thumbs up to this, you know, in the next month. So whatever, you know, obviously Thurston County turns out to be the ideal location. I'm sure we're going to get, I'm sure the legislature will come back to us and talk to us further down the road. But at this point, I'm not in a position to give a thumbs up to something like this.
Okay. Do you have what you need, Romero?
Yep, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item number four, our hiring exceptions discussion. For the commissioner's office, clerk of the board, public works.
Yeah, Commissioner, we're going to be bringing to you some, um, and those are, those are positions that perhaps you may consider moving away from the, what we call is the hiring chill. Are those positions, they have become vacant and, uh, on your direction has been put a 90-day waiting period? And, uh, in a case-by-case basis, you ask staff to come back to you and make an argument as to how you can exempt those particular positions. You have exercised that in the last couple of meetings. And again, attached to your packet is a, is a running report. Some of the positions, they may be for the most part are expedited temporary, except for a, a couple of them. So for, for your consideration today, it's two positions. One is the commissioner's office. As you may recall, Labanita Boomer, the clerk of the board retired at the end of May. And I've requested the board to, uh, uh, give us the, the, the exception to hire the clerk of the board because I believe that is an essential position for the operations of the Board of County Commissioners.
Which is at the very bottom of this sheet. Okay, any questions from the, uh, either of my seatmates?
How long have we been operating without Labanita? Has it been a couple, three months or two?
Couple months and, and, and we have Amy, we have given her a temporary pay increase to fulfill the, the, the disposition. So, um, I don't think that is, uh, uh, that is a good temporary approach. Having somebody fill a temporary position, but I believe we need to address this on a permanent basis and hire a clerk of the board as soon as feasible.
And remind me that the chill policy would be another 90 days before we?
When, when, from the moment the, the, the position became vacant is a hiring chill of 90 days.
Go ahead, Gary.
Are we going to have a update on the financial potentials or uptick, downturn of what's going to be coming? I'd like to see what our sales tax revenue looks like compared to last year. Because that's a big piece of this puzzle as far as revenue coming in. And I'd like to see what our property tax issue is looking like. But I think this is an essential part of doing business. And I'm inclined to go ahead with it, even though we've, because we've kind of met the requirements of the freeze while we've been waiting here during this COVID retreat, if you will. So I, I'm, uh, I'm thinking I'd like to move forward, but I'd like to have some of that. Are you asking, is the county manager asking that we take an action today?
Yes, sir. And, uh, and Commissioner, um, after this item, it's not on your agenda, but I will ask for the permission of the chair to add the budget schedule. They will walk you through specific, what are you asking for? And so you're at least tracking as to when this conversation will begin and will you, when you may be taking an action on potential reductions related to the COVID-19. So that is coming up.
Okay, but, all right. So you're asking for us to make a decision and then you're going to explain?
Well, it, it, this, this position is, is funded.
It's what?
It's funded.
It's funded.
Oh, yeah.
It just became vacant.
Yeah. Well.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to, to gi, give more money or authorize additional expenditures. That's not the, the request. The request is for you to exempt the 90-day hiring chill.
Right, and if, so we, Labanita, that, that position retired a few months ago and it's being filled with a temporary position. If it were to be, uh, backfilled and it were to come from in-house, that, uh, that position may not be filled?
That is, that is a good possibility. And, and again, depending on who gets, uh, who gets elected for this position, then we, they, the, the conversation will be what to do next on the vacant position.
Got it, okay.
They will have to go through the same process as you're going through today.
And this position is currently filled, I mean, it's currently temporarily filled, but it's funded. So I, I'm willing to do that.
So, uh, Labanita Boomer retired at the end of May.
But she had gone for a month or two before then.
Yeah, because she was on the high-risk category, so she was assigned to home. But with the work is still needed to be done. So Amy has backfilled that need and we have exercised the temporary pay increase for Amy.
Okay.
So that position became vacant at the end of May.
Got it.
And, and I, I guess as a follow-up to that, in my observation, it seems like Amy's been doing an excellent job here. Is that, I mean, I know we're not doing a, an analysis of that position right now, but I, I don't see that we're going to do anything other than change a job description. We're not going to be adding any more employees if we make an internal advance. We're still going to have a vacancy. So why not put her in that position now that there's a vacancy?
I think we have to, if I may, Commissioner.
I'm getting ahead of myself.
I think we, if you.
You're from that position.
You have proved the exception of hiring. They will need to go through a recruitment process.
Okay.
I give a thumbs up. Do you have anything further, uh, any questions, Ty?
No, I'm good.
Yes, uh, so here's, I guess, there's two that you're being, asking us to consider. Do we have, I mean, these only two we're going to see or is there a sea of other requests coming down the pike? I mean, this is that called piecemeal concept that I've brought up multiple times where, oh yeah, okay, this makes sense. And then next week it's three more and next week it's five more and next week it's two more. And then I go back and think, well, gee, if I'd known there were 13 more coming, I wouldn't have approved the first two because I only saw those in isolation. And to just say that the work needs to be done, every single position that we had, there's work that needs to be done. So the threshold has to be higher than that or else there was no point to having the hiring chill policy to begin with.
May I add to that before we get to you, Robin? I'll piggyback on that because I've been receiving calls and emails from folks that are dissatisfied because they're not getting their permits at a timely extension. And when I've talked with Josh, of course, we swept, was it four positions, four bodies that he wasn't filling, four or five? And, uh, that's creating a backlog and that's. And that's, it's, it's public service. It's getting people, it's not costing them as much money in, with construction costs and such when things are delayed. So I, I'm concerned also that those positions got swept, but we did it for everybody. Now they're coming back, well, gosh, we got to look at this again. With Labanita's retirement, I, I see that as a genuine need. But I can see some other needs as well. So with, to Ty's point, where, where are we with this now? Go ahead, Robin.
Well, I just wanted to address the piecemeal nature of a hiring freeze. There is no other way to do a hiring freeze because we never know ahead what positions are going to eventually be vacant. They will come to you in ones and twos and threes. And we can't plan ahead. It's, it's very few times when we know. So unless you're going to only do these like once a month or once a quarter, in which case the, since we're doing a hiring chill rather than a freeze, the time will have passed on many of them, there is no other way to do it. This, this is part of why a hiring freeze is not very effective at saving money.
But are we going to get any, are we going to get any? I understand we can't, we can't say what's coming in terms of vacancy. But we did also, in addition to that, we swept out all of the vacant positions, offering the departments to come on a case-by-case basis if for an absolutely critical need. So do we, and those we should be able to look at and go, who's going to be, you know, Romero's got his hand up. I know we asked for the, for the across-the-board cuts and, you know, there may be, we got a letter from the Clerk's office, for example. We had that issue with the Prosecutor's Office, where we, we did address, that we tried to address that in a sense. So I guess at least that piece of it, we should be able to see where we're at. I know we can't.
That will be on Thursday.
Okay, well then can we delay decision on this until Thursday's meeting?
There's this two, there's two different items, two different decisions that you take, that you took. One is the hiring freeze that you're going to be sweeping those positions. And the, the follow-up direction to that is you give the opportunities to offices and departments to come back and have a buyback those critical positions in which they can probably find, find additional savings to, to supplement the savings that you would have by eliminating those positions, the sweeping of those positions. That decision was made on May 20th by the Board. And all those positions prior to that were swapped, they were vacant. This is, is the different issue. As Robin has stated, is those positions, they have become vacant after the fact. Where you established that 90-day hiring chill. You don't eliminate those positions. So the request for you is whether you want to exercise exempting the hiring chill of 90 days.
I feel very uncomfortable where the very first exception that I'm being asked is from my own office, the Commissioner's. And that just makes me feel really tweaky about whether we're being fair and, and even across the board to our different offices. Of course, I know what Labanita's position does because I'm, I'm here in this office every single day. And I don't have that same knowledge of a public works employee or a public health employee. So it, it's just, it's just an uncomfortable sort of, maybe it's just complete coincidence, but it makes me uncomfortable.
I would.
You got to live by the rules that we set for the others.
Wait, hang on, hang on. And, and I, I agree, it makes me feel uncomfortable that it's the Commissioner's Office. But it came, the vacancy came after the fact, after the chill. It's already funded. And if this is filled with, within the county, it may not, that, that position may not be filled. So there's some savings there as well. So Robin, were you first? I think Robin was first before Romero.
As a matter of clarification, this is not the first action that you have taken on this.
Oh.
You have taken on, on June 2nd, June 16th, in which you approve positions in the other's office. You also approve positions of the Court Security Officer Bailiff on call and pro- pro-term. And those are temporary positions for Superior Court. You have taken those actions in terms of accepting the 90-day hiring chill. So this is not the first position that you've seen today.
Okay. Go ahead, Gary.
I, I guess, I just want to follow up on a comment that the Board Chair made. And that is in regard to delays of the permits, that type of thing. I went out on an inspection last night on a permit that a couple has been delayed for two years now. They've got $20,000 tied up, has nothing to do with this COVID thing. They've got two aging parents that they're trying to get moved in with them. And then they've got a refusal, they hired a bio, a wetland biologist to give a report, somebody that's recognized here in the county. And then our staff said, no, has nothing to do with what we're doing here. This has been going on now for these folks for two years. We're talking about trust of government. And now more than ever, it's important that the government be trusted in their many dealings with the public. And so I'm about as upset as could be, and I know we're going to talk about this later. But I think in this particular situation, I'm, I'm willing to move forward because I do see the necessity of this. And we're not going to be immediately filling another position after this anyway. And I see a continual progression of entities coming forward like Robin and the County Manager pointed out, we're going to be dealing with. So I, I think this is a very important position to fill as a Clerk of the Board position. So that we can make sure that we're doing our job in a timely fashion for our citizens. So I'm going to be supportive of the Chair on this particular issue.
Okay, so you need direction, do you need thumbs up or down?
Yes, sir.
For the Clerk of the Board? Okay. Thank you, what's next? Uh, do we have 25, there are 35 minutes?
Yeah, the, the next request is a seasonal position. And this is located in Public Works. And this is a tollhouse operator. And again, this is funded by the Solid Waste. And this is, position is only needed for the summer months to address the surge during the summer months that would have additional waste brought into the work. And also to accommodate current staff that goes on vacation, so there's no gaps on the schedule, on the, on the, on the, on the shifts they have. So a, and again, for your consideration is to accept tollhouse operator. This is seasonal for the next three months. And is paid by this tip and fees, the Solid Waste Fund.
Well, it's full-time, but temporary full-time.
Actually, this is a 0.75.
0.75.
That's all the, all the tollhouse operators are at 0.75.
Okay. Questions or comments or discussion? Go ahead, Gary.
When we first went into this situation, we shut down the outlying transfer stations. And I don't think there's been any other topic that I got as many phone calls on. And on that particular topic, had garbage dumped in numerous places around the outlying areas of the county. And to me, garbage dumping ought to be one of the more serious offenses that we're dealing with. So I am ready to move forward on this exemption.
Hi, anything, comments, questions? Okay, there we go, three thumbs up. And you added one, another one on, you're adding a topic?
Yeah, one, one item for your consideration, just to walk you through the schedule related to the upcoming budget amendment related to the potential reductions on expenditures that might be considered in 2020. And Robin is wanting to walk you through that schedule. Included on your pocket is a montager. They outlined the, the data schedule, so Robin.
Well, I just wanted to check in and make you aware that the upcoming schedule for Amendment Number Four, which will include budget reductions and appropriation of the CARES Act funding. This Thursday morning, we have the final review and decisions on the budget reduction. So you'll be able to review all of the items that offices and departments enter in Qwestica. And I'll give you an update on those offices that did not enter in anything into Qwestica. We can review the vacant position list and what people have requested off that. And we can do an update on the forecast. Now, I would like to say that I have provided you all of the information that I have about sales tax. The May sales tax came in 15% less than we thought it would. And the, the June sales tax numbers are not posted yet. After the 20th, I look every day, and I looked this morning, and we still don't have June's numbers. And we may not have them on Thursday, but the day that I get them, I will share them with you. And we also know from the Treasurer that at this point, property tax payments are about 2% less than they usually are at this time. So we have that information and, and we have already built it into the numbers that you have seen. So if I have any updates, I will definitely share them, but we may not have revenue updates on Thursday.
Gary, go ahead.
Robin, were you done? Robin, were you done?
Yes, with what we're going to do on Thursday, yes.
Okay. The 15% less from May's revenue stream, that was from a projection, is the way I'm looking at it. No, it was the 15% less than we took in last year in May?
It's, it compared to last year, it's 10% less than what we collected last year in May. And we had projected at least 5% more. So we are down 15% in the month of May. And that's worth over $200,000 in sales tax collections.
Okay, now my next question is, are we being assured that we have, that we're, we're getting adequate receipt of those taxes from the point of delivery for all of these UPS carriers and that type of thing? That they're hauling all those goods. I see those UPS trucks more now than ever. And I think a lot of people are making purchases that are coming by UPS to a new point of delivery instead of a retail outlet somewhere else. So how assured are we that we're getting our just due when it comes to sales tax?
Extremely confident. I would say that I am extremely confident, as is your Treasurer, that the county is collecting all of the sales tax that is due to us.
Robin, before I get to Ty, that 15% is less than May of 19. How much, how's it compare with April, the previous month?
April, if, if you think about how we collect sales tax, you, you have to remember that the county receives the payment on a two-year lag. So the money we got in May was from, people spent their money in March and the county received it in May. What we got in April was for money that was spent in February before we saw the effect of the pandemic. And let's see if I can just quickly pull up the graph on sales tax.
While you're looking at that, Robin, could you bring before the Board possibly a years-long record of sales tax? But do it like for, I don't know, maybe 16, 17, 18, 19, and up to today? Is that something that you could do so we could have a comparison?
This graph goes back to 2006. The one on your screen.
Boy, you're quick.
I aim to please. So you see, here's the last few years. And if you want to look back to 2013, with very few exceptions, we've seen positive year-over-year growth in, you know, almost as high as 15%. And it was starting to soften a little in 2019. Wasn't, the collections were not as good as they were in 18. And we had talked about that when we were building the budget for this year. And however, we did expect to have the strong growth continue at over 5% in 2020. And what we see is here's January, Feb- February, March, April, very strong. And then you've got this 10% drop right here for the collection in May. And we expect June to be even less or, or a bigger drop. Because when people were spending money in March, you have to also remember that the businesses were not closed down until mid-month in March. So, and we also had a delay of, of collections. So that could impact it as well. So we really are waiting to see what the June revenue looks like for sales tax. It'll be a few more days before we have that number.
And you've given this to us before.
Yes.
I've seen this before, yeah. All right.
Yeah, I reported this the day we had the, the drop. That was not quite three weeks ago. Part of the challenge with the revenue forecast in the pandemic is that we went over a fiscal cliff. It was a very sudden and abrupt change. And our data comes in once a month. We're not going to get new data only once a month. So it is an agonizing wait to have the next data.
Commissioner Menzner, any questions?
Where'd that graph go?
Can you put the graph back, Robin? Hang on, bye.
There you go.
I'd be happy to get you another copy of this.
Yeah, if you could, I know it's in some of our budget stuff. Could you just print, push print on, on your machine, so I can go over here and grab that out of the printer, please?
Yes, I absolutely will.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ty?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay. So continue on with this, and that's what we're going to talk about on Thursday.
So yep, that's, that's, that's a preview of Thursday. It's probably the whole revenue conversation for Thursday. Next, not next Tuesday, but the Tuesday after, on July 7th, I will ask you to set a public hearing on the budget amendment. That will be set for July 21st. We'll hold the public hearing on July 21st. And then on Tuesday, July 28th, you'll be adopting the budget reduction. So again, this Thursday, I will be asking you to make final decisions on the budget reductions. And then we will adopt those at the end of July because the process takes that long to actually get through.
Okay.
All right.
Got it, good. Any comments about what we're going to be coming up in the next several weeks? A month?
No.
No? All right, thank you, Robin. Nope. All right, thank you, Robin. Excuse me. Now we're looking at. Public testimony follow-up.
I don't have anything in particular. We've been receiving a couple of emails related to phase three. And we've already responded to a couple. We're in the process of responding to another email. And so we're trying to keep up with the responses to the emails that you have received in the commissioner's office. Although I really don't have any additional. Feedback on that.
All right. And I appreciate you keeping up on those. Commissioner Items. Commissioner Mensah, anything?
I think I do, but I'm trying to pull up my list, so I defer to Gary or yourself.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
I take it that before too long, we're gonna be going into some executive session, you say?
Eleven thirty has to be up.
So.
Yeah, because there's.
A hard cut at eleven thirty. So we got a few minutes?
Or maybe a couple of minutes before, so we can.
Okay. I mentioned earlier, as we were discussing on that position. I went out and looked at a site last night. And I have, I just have a hard time believing. That we could hold a couple up. It's a ten-acre parcel, plenty of high ground. No reason whatsoever that these people have not been allowed to build their house yet. They've jumped through. Hoops like you can't believe. And we can't blame this on the COVID. This is a disaster. I mean, you talk about. The community not trusting us to do the job for the public. And and this is a prime example. I just, I don't understand how this could take two years. And I'm doing more follow-up, gonna be working with CPED. But it it's crazy that we're telling people with aging parents. Oh, well, you gotta do this and you have to do that. There is a litany of things that they have to follow. To get it done and then continually being kicked back and oh, get this red rock. And then the blue rock and not being told to get them at the same time, but just continually one after another. So I I can't say. How aggravating this is to know that this is going on. I've got about three other situations that are very similar to this. And come to find out, Commissioner Hutchings, I found out this was actually across the street from my district. And it ended up in your district. So you'll probably be getting some calls on this one as well.
Okay. And what I'd like to hear is from from Josh Cummings.
I I do have a request in that they get back in touch with us and this will be passed on to you as well, sir. So. I just want to let you know. I mean, I'm just frustrated beyond belief. We can't blame this on any of the virus business. This is an ongoing activity that's.
Right. And I and I heard that somebody wanting to pay for a permit was told you can't do it via a check. You have to do it via a credit card because of COVID and you have to pay that two and a half percent in processing fee. So it's costing them two and a half percent more to do it on a credit card when they're ready to write a check. Bank draft or whatever and and make get it paid.
And mail it in.
So as I was told, it was not an option. So I'm I'm gonna I'll talk with Josh and find out what the scoop is so I can respond back to my constituent. And let her know how to do business or how to get business done at at no increase in cost. Commissioner Mensah, go ahead, sir.
On the same topic, I had a citizen on in my district out in Steamboat Island who had a. He had the situation where that we'd heard from staff where he'd gotten like conflicting letters from Public Works. And environmental health regarding a. Approval of a of an of a similar issue, a situation where you really would think you would. That one letter would be consistent between, you know, the different county departments. And so, you know, that's. That's a situation that we heard from staff that they they had addressed and identified that as a real issue. And it created. A process where citizens aren't gonna get those kind of conflicting letters anymore. So I saw that firsthand and it was. It was very frustrating and I'm glad that we were able to to deal with that. Of course, it didn't help this citizen, although he's. He's now on the right path toward toward getting his project done. But he was happy to hear that we had identified that. As an extremely vexing situation and had taken steps to remedy it. So. There is some positive movement here over the last, you know, couple of years.
And another another positive note is I heard from a constituent that he was expecting approval. And he'd been waiting for about two months. He emailed me. I asked the staff. And they, coincidentally enough, it was his permit was being signed off and ready for him to receive. That I think today. So he contacted me and the next day he's getting his permit. I told him I had nothing to do with that. The fact he contacted me had nothing to do with any of that. Once it went from permitting to environmental health, then it flipped back over to permitting and this issue. So. He's very happy with the counting. It's, I mean, that was I know that was only about a two, maybe three month at the most, which to me doesn't seem unreasonable. So that's that's a good thing. Romero, you had your hand up.
So I I I appreciate the feedback you get from from your constituents. But I encourage the board to give staff the opportunity to provide the other side of the story. To have have a comprehensive comprehensive analysis of the of the permitting process they go through. And in my comment, I don't want to come across that undermining anything what you're saying. That's not my point. But I do believe staff should be given the opportunity to provide the larger context of a permit. And perhaps how we can resolve any particular issues. I'm not stating that that we have, we're there. There's many opportunities for us to improve the process. And we'll continue to find ways to improve the process as to how we serve our citizens. But please give us the opportunity to provide the larger context. Or any particular issue that your constituents may br- may bring to your attention.
And I do that. I make that that's just part of the research. To find out what what the issue is. So thank you for that. Gary?
I guess I I would like to follow up on what county manager is bringing up. But I would also like to point out to the public that we end up here in a situation. Because of the Open Meetings Act and we are not allowed to discuss any of these issues except in public. And we're kind of airing our dirty laundry in public, if you will. And that's that's also a problem because. Yes, I I would rather get to the bottom of these things. But if I don't hear what my fellow commissioners are dealing with, something very similar. And in this particular case that I'm bringing up today, this this citizen is out. Twenty thousand dollars now over a two-year period. And staff just recently got back to him and said, well, it's gonna be another six months before. We get you through that process. And I'm telling you, we've we've got this issue of. Of doubt when it comes to our constituents trusting government to do the right thing. And this is such a flagrant example that. I want to make sure that my seatmates know that there's those kind of issues out there. Yes, there's always two sides to every story, but a two and a half year delay, I can't comprehend. When I've got I've got a house that was built within two hundred yards of my house. In which the party was allowed to move a brick. And they got it done in two months. They built the house in two months. It was, i- if it isn't corruption. I don't know what it is. It's either corruption or incompetence. Now that was done in twenty sixteen. And I know we've made a lot of changes. To try and get things fixed here. And and hopefully we're getting it fixed. But but when we've got examples like that, compared to what this party is up against. And he's got aging parents that are gonna be dead before this person gets this done. And they want to take care of their parents.
So I can't wait to hear from Josh at the other side of the story before I get.
I'm sure you're gonna hear more about it because it did end up in your district, sir.
Okay. All right, we have ten minutes before we go into an executive session. Is there any other burning issues? That way I just want to give commissioners and staff. A five-minute break. So we have about six minutes. Anything else you'd like to speak about?
No, I'll I'll hold my tongue.
Go ahead, Ty.
Just take a five minutes. So you guys probably know that there's an innovative justice group that meets. It's run by Wayne Graham and the prosecutor's office, Larry Jefferson, public defense. Representatives from the BHO, representatives from different community groups like the. And also like the mental health, some of the mental health facility. It's a pretty, it's a pretty robust group and. Commissioner is not assigned to it or anything, but I attend when I have the opportunity. Just to hear what's going on and and provide input when I can. So something that just came up and it'll sound like it was my idea, but I'm I'm giving you this background. It had nothing to do with me whatsoever. In fact, I was late to the meeting when this was discussed. So in in many discussions that we have at that monthly meeting, it often. The the concept of a one-stop shop keeps coming up, whether it's for reentry services. Different jurisdictions have tried to do something like that. Whether it's and so there's that kind of idea. And then there's also a connected idea of having somewhere law enforcement can bring. Folks that if it's not a matter, if it's not a criminal issue, but they get called as a default. And they need to do kind of a handoff to social services. There's a thought about, you know, the the original idea of the triage center, et cetera. So these ideas are constantly just just working in this group as something that's needed. One of the members that comes to the Innovative Justice Group is a retired, I believe retired. A commercial Realtor, real estate person. And she became aware of a building, three thou- uh, three thousand Pacific Avenue. She keeps hearing this talk about, you know, the need for sort of a centralized place to do some of this work. And so she basically talked to the owner and got a sort of the the parameters of a proposal and brought it to the last innovative justice meeting. And we were all very thankful that, you know, she took that initiative on her own. And so a group of people. Said, we'll come out, we'll go out and see the facility. So I jumped on that. I jumped in, volunteered to go out with the group yesterday. It it's a a building that has been acquired. It used to be like the liquor control board was in there and a few different state agencies. It's kind of a, it's not a great-looking building right now, but a new developer is coming in, is gonna make it super renovated and nice and create a. A a big central atrium in the middle so that it can have different tenants rather than just one tenant. And they showed us some of the design work they're looking to do. They're gonna invest about three million dollars into the building. And so anyway, it was just the prosecutor was there, John Toonheim, Wayne Graham, who's the kind of a prosecutor, chair of the Innovative Justice Group. Patrick O'Connor was there. I was there. Ms. Terry, the citizen, was there. And we were just sort of looking at this space and just kind of trying to imagine what it might be and how it could meet the needs of our. Of our justice system. So I'm just giving you the kind of preliminary heads up that there might be a more concrete idea. Where we're gonna brainstorm on what we might be able to do. And the idea would be to have a master tenant of some kind, whether it's the county or a. Five oh one C three or some other entity that would then sublease to different service providers and. There's even a space in the back where you could have residential component, like the diversion center they have up in Snohomish County. There's Sally Ports in the back where you could, you know, law enforcement could 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 roll up and do various things. There's a lot of possibilities. Very preliminary, but it was kind of an exciting possibility.
So has the liquor control and Washington State Patrol, they've left that building now?
They're out. In fact, we got to go inside. It's all torn up and, you know, a a. The renovations are are basically gonna happen this like in the next three months. And then then they're gonna look to whoever might come into the building to do specific tailored tenant improvements. To meet the specific needs of whoever the tenants might be. But there's some general improvements that are gonna happen regardless. And they're gonna, they're gonna be doing them right away. This developer, I forget the name of it. It's it's like three letters, like a lot of developers, not SJC, but something like that, MGK or something. They're the second largest landlord for state offices. Apparently, there's there's one. Entity that 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 is far and away the the biggest landlord to the state. And this group is second. So they they pick up a lot of these smaller buildings, not like skyscrapers and stuff, but kind of, they like to take old. Kind of dilapidated buildings and then really make them nice. And and then they do the management themselves. So anyway, it was a. Very interesting meeting and the I, you know, everybody wanted to know what I thought and I basically tasked. And oh, Mary Ann Clear was also there, our head of public pre-trial services. And I I tasked them back to kind of create the vision, like let it. You know, put your heads together and tell us what what kind of tenants would create the maximum impact to the community to be co-located. Whether it's reentry or triage that, you know, and they're gonna kind of go back and talk to their. Talk to their, you know, groups and try to come up with something that's more of an organized concept.
That's a nice building. And just a few years ago, with the all the state workers in it. Wagner's Bakery had a kiosk in there. Where you can get, they can get lunch, breakfast items and and such. It was kind of nice, very nice.
One of the questions while Robin's on the line is is that. John Toonheim had the question of, you know, what what type of, if we focused on reentry. Which is, he said, and I quote him, key to making sure we don't refill up our jail is to have a more robust reentry system. Then the question became, what would have to, what would that building have to have or do to be eligible for detention sales tax? Like what would be the nexus and the the minimum requirements to to have a reentry program qualify?
So detention sales tax can only be spent for the operation of a jail. So if it's not a jail, I don't know that it could qualify.
Because, you know, in Hillsborough, Oregon, and and we're not looking to do, I mean, he wasn't looking to do a Hillsborough model, but in their model. They do have, it's almost like a complete, it is almost like a transition jail. It's almost a complete residential facility.
I'm familiar with Hillsborough and.
That qualify?
It it, I don't know if the Hillsborough model would qualify. We'd have to take a look at exactly what it is that they're suggesting, but the law is very clear. That it can only be used for the construction and operation of a jail.
John really wanted to, John Toonheim, the prosecutor, really wanted to. Get a group to back together to go back and look at Hillsborough again and see what they're doing now.
We only have a few minutes, commissioners.
I'm done.
All right. Well, thank you. That's good information. We're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting and we're gonna go into an executive session. Pursuant to RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero subsection.
Commissioner, that that is the Board of Health. So the chair of the Board of Health.
Oh, Board of Health. I didn't have it highlighted.
So maybe take a pause for a couple of minutes. We pause this live stream. It will come back to the live stream. The Chair of the Board of Health will announce the executive session and then we'll. Shut down the live stream for you to conduct your executive session.
I like that plan.
Yeah, please, please don't log out of the Zoom.
So a two-minute, well, how many minute pause are you looking for?
Uh, four minutes.
Four-minute pause, we'll be back at eleven thirty.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. And three, two, one. Okay, we're back. It's time for the Board of Health Executive Session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three-zero dot one-one-zero-one-five. We're going to be discussing with legal counsel representing our agency litigation or potential litigation, specifically health officer case. There may be a commissioner action following the executive session. We're allotting thirty minutes for this executive session. And with that, I believe the live stream will end. Did I miss anything, County Manager?
No, I think the right one point, so we're all going to shut down the live stream as well as the conference call so you can get into your executive session. Give us a minute, please.
Did I need to take any kind of role for the record? I did not do that.
No, I'll do that after the class.
So we're long enough?
Nope.
Nope?
No.